August 4th meeting, we're emailing. Do we have any corrections or additions to those minutes?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. First item we have, we have to have a public hearing for discussion on the disposal of the old city hall located on Monroe Street. So I need a motion to suspend our current council meeting.
So moved.
Second. Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. Do I need a motion to open-
Open the public hearing.
Motion to open up the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. I want to ask Tim for some direction on what we need to do.
Legal notice.
Oh, we have a legal notice to make a matter of record that we did advertise this property that would happen a public hearing, so we need to make that a matter of record.
So moved.
Second. Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you. Tim, what do we do now?
Well, the purpose of this is really to seek public input with regard to ideas, suggestions, comments regarding the old city hall, vote as to any possible uses by the city, or the possibility of selling the city hall. At this point, you can sell it in one of two ways. You can either list it with a broker, or you can put it up for auction. So, you know, at this point, really, the purpose of the public hearing is to solicit any type of input from the community before council proceeds to make decisions with regard to either the future use of the building, or the disposal of the building.
Do you have any public comments concerning the sale of the old city hall? Anybody have anything to say about it? We are not selling it tonight. We're not doing anything like that. We're just looking for input, and then we can decide how we want to sell it if this is sold.
Yeah, I know there's been some interest now after the first phase. How much interest? How many people have been through it?
Oh, there's three or four people have been through it that I know of. So-
So if we were-
As far as dollar amounts, I have no idea. They just showed interest in wanting to see the inside and see the condition.
So if we were to go through a broker and list it, then we would have the standard listing for a set period of time, 60 days?
That's negotiable between you and the listing broker.
Yeah. And if it failed to come to an agreement with the buyer, could we at that time then go to an auction?
Certain.
Yeah. Could we do a sealed bid for a building like that?
You had to offer, or you had, we went through the process of advertising for anyone to come forward with a sealed bid, and we received no bids. So at this point, this is the next step in the process.
Tim, I think the process we had though was-
At that price-
Ninety percent of the two appraised values, so-
You still have to go through other steps if you're going to sell it for less than that price.
Well, if someone was interested at a lower price, how do you go about that?
You have to have a public hearing before you can accept it. I don't make the laws.
Do we, if there's some interest in it now, do we have to list it now? I mean, can we?
What you're telling me is-
The purpose is, the next step is, after you close the public hearing, then council can make a decision on what you want to do. If you want to list it, then you advertise, then you have to publish notice that a determination has been made to list it with a broker. Once it's listed with a broker, then anybody that's interested in buying it goes through the broker.
Okay. Do we have to have a broker?
Yes.
Do we have to go through a broker?
You have to go through a broker.
You just can't say, hey, we're going to take-
We can't, I've already checked. We cannot just sell it ourselves.
Any other comments concerning the public hearing? Larry, you got something you want to say?
Has there been any consideration, like, you know, we have a lot of organizations that we've started within the last few years. You know, number one, in my thinking, Indiana Main Street. Is it something that possibly could be given to Indiana Main Street, and they could use that office, and possibly could mutually have a stream of income by renting out spaces to other people?
Can we give a little bit of the question?
If it's a charitable entity, or a 501(c) entity, then there are exceptions to the sale requirements. So, yeah, you could do something along those lines. If it's being rented to an individual that wants to use it for a for-profit purpose, if I can put in a retail business, or a restaurant, or something like that, then you have to have it appraised for fair market rental value, and you have to determine what the fair market rental value is at that point.
But like Indiana Main Street will move in and have their office there, then would the property become Indiana Main Street, and they then rent it out to other entities? And of course, when they do the 990 for the 501(c)(3), then you would have to record that in Indiana?
Yeah. We would be giving the building back.
Yeah.
You'd have to give it.
I believe under the statute that there are exceptions to the requirement that you sell it at a determined price.
Yeah.
I have a thought, maybe something that might, you know, with possibly being-
So, and I just use this as an example. Main Street could be given this property. They, in return, they could open it up to other nonprofits, be it the, just for example, the Historical Society, or the North Adams Arts Council, or, you know, any of those things.
If it's no longer our property and it's Main Street's, then their board makes-
So we would have to give out notice on that, or can we make that decision at any time? Is there, what's the process to just gift it?
Well, after the public hearing, you don't make decisions in the public hearing. So you close the public hearing, then you make a decision as to whether you're going to sell the property. That doesn't have to be done tonight. You can table that for further discussion in subsequent meeting. Or you can determine that you're not going to sell the property, and that you're going to work with non-for-profit entities who may want to either take over the building and own it, and then use it however they wish. Or if city wanted to retain ownership, then you could work out arrangements with non-for-profit entities. If you retain ownership, you're responsible for the ongoing maintenance and repairs of the building.
Okay.
Mrs. Gimble had?
Well, you know what? One time, the Art, the North Adams Arts Council had considered the same idea of that Mr. Trish. And we, you know, were generously given an opportunity to rent the-
Police station.
The whole police station for a very nominal fee, which appeals us, but, you know, we don't know how long that we'll be allowed to do that. So we said, I'm thinking about that, but I think we currently tabled a desire to have that building, and we want to make a go of it in the old police station. Because even, you know, we don't want to keep moving and have nobody keep track of where we are. We like the idea of staying downtown because it's more visible, and more of a presence than a third key address would be. We reconsidered, although I do think it would be a wonderful thing to have it used by 501(c).
That's a pretty big building for a non-for-profit. I mean, I understand, yeah, it sounds good that you're going to give it for free, but they're going to have a lot of maintenance involved in something like that. Is that even going to help a non-for-profit? Yeah, you got a free building, but now you have to take care of this building that's got a flat roof on it that's going to leak. And, I mean, I'm sure the city had plenty of money put into that building over the years for a non-for-profit.
That was my concern after realizing the money that we had to spend on the police station recently. That became my concern with allowing somebody to rent that building from us with the overhead maintenance viability. Giving it away, I think it's a different story, because there's no more liability on us, but I still go back and say, if there's a willing buyer, I'm not opposed to that idea, but I almost feel like-
Is there a willing buyer first?
Yeah.
Should he try to be sold first?
Because we have other spaces that could be used. There's a cost associated with that, but-
Any other comments concerning the public hearing and comments on the building? If not, then we can entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. So now we need a motion to reconvene the regular city council.
So moved.
Second. Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Now we can freely talk, I guess, around the public hearing. What do you want to do with them? And don't rush into this. If we're not sure what we want to do, we can table this to the next meeting. Don't rush into this. I think this is the first time we heard about nonprofit, and how we go about that.
We've heard that, but I think there's many groups that would like us to give it to them.
Yeah. I mean, Max approached us a couple months ago about Historical Society, so that's not the first-
I guess my, I mean, I want us to work well with the nonprofits, and I really do. And, I mean, obviously with the Arts Council, we're trying to, it may be delayed a little bit after yesterday's announcement, but we're trying to build a space for the Arts Council, ultimately. And their sculpture tour, and the other arts initiatives. I don't know. I'm just inclined that, and if there's been recent interest shown, and we have other spaces-
There have been recent interests shown in buying the building.
Well, we can always decide to try to sell it. If we don't sell it, we can go to the next.
We don't have to take the offering?
You're right.
Not solid, we have to go through a realtor? I think that's the hardest part, selection of realtor. We have lots of realtors.
So there's a good question. Do we have to take bids on, I mean, how that-
You have the right to select whoever you want. It's not because you're not above a threshold that requires submission of courts or bids. So you could, you're pretty good. I would recommend that you do a multiple listing agreement, so it doesn't matter who brings the buyer to the table. They would benefit from that under the listing agreement.
We can't auction it.
We can offer that.
Auction it with a minimum, then that'd be an absolute auction.
You can say that it's subject to-
If it brings over 50,000, that auction, we would take it.
Yeah.
Do they-
Yeah.
Do you think they know what it's costing us now, just to hold on to it?
I don't know, Phil, if I put you on the spot, but it's got to be a couple thousand dollars a month, I would think.
And do we like the idea of auctioning it, or list, or we then have to pick an auctioneer?
I don't see any-
Leave a minimum. If it doesn't sell for that minimum, if it's over that minimum, sell it if there's interest. I like the fact that it's done. Again, like Tyler, the longer we hold on to it-
It costs.
It's continually costing us. And there was a question of the survey, too. Has that been completed?
We've solicited prices for a survey for not just the building, but also the parking lot behind, so it's two separate surveys. And they should be moving on that in a couple of weeks here. We should have that.
If it doesn't sell, and we ultimately make a deal with 501(c), the non-for-profits, this is kind of contrary to my next statement, but I don't think we want to just unload it. You know, it's the lowest bidder. So I agree, from an auction standpoint, you put a minimum on it, but does it hurt us to go after, I mean, through a broker, and we're not-
That, we can decide, and we don't have to do that again tonight. We can think about it at the next meeting.
So if we list it with a broker, and we have an interested party, and they make an offer, but it's below the average of the two appraisals, then we have to have another public hearing to discuss whether or not we can- If you're willing to accept a lesser price.
You'd stop having a public hearing, maybe it's sold lower at auction, though, too, wouldn't you?
Aye. You see I'm frustrated? Okay. What I want to do, guys?
I'd say list it, but-
List it.
I do, too.
The next thing then is, who with?
Can you just, can you have them offer to bid the listing? I mean-
I'm sorry, what?
Can you ask whoever wants to list it, come with your-
Real estate firm to come in and say, hey, here, I'll list it, and I'll charge you this much.
Well, that's negotiable with the listing agent. Yeah. I mean, you can talk to a different and say, you know, what are you willing to do- In an effort not to show favoritism, though, toward any one local broker or firm, it would be nice to have them come to us with-
I'd say, yeah.
Yeah. Well, and we could contact them and say, okay, hey, submit, or, and I basically send it all out to you guys, and we decide at the next meeting, this is who we're going to go with.
Is that fair?
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to, or say myself which one I'd prefer, but I don't want to show favoritism.
Yeah. Well, we have a basis then for selection. You know, right now, it's difficult to say, I'm going to go with that firm, and all the other firms are upset with this.
Well, and all the other firms could have been cheaper.
Yeah. I mean, what you can do, what's going to happen, if you've made a decision that you're going to list it, then we have to advertise, you made that determination, then what I would suggest is you contact the owners and tell them to submit a listing agreement for your consideration. You review the listing agreements, you make a decision based on the listing agreement, and the terms and the conditions that are proposed.
Yeah. It's no different than a request or proposal. I mean, you don't necessarily go with the cheapest one, you go with the one who's going to do the best job, right?
Yeah. I mean-
All right. I will make a motion that we, sorry.
One question, though. Do we need to decide how long it's for?
Well, that's, I mean, that would be potentially a term that's included in the listing agreement. You know, somebody, a broker may say, I'm not willing to list it unless it's for six months. Somebody else may come and say, I'm willing to list it for 60 days. So, you know, unless you want to specify that particular term, that's up to you.
I want the guy that's going to come and say, I'm going to have this sold in 30 days.
Go ahead, make your motion, Ken.
What was I going to do? Make a motion to list it with a broker.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. Thank you. Next item is a tax abatement for Gilpin's. We have Mark Burry here and Paul Gilpin want to come forward, and this takes a declaratory resolution, so.
Thank you for having us this evening. It is a great pleasure to represent Gilpin Incorporated, and I have Paul Gilpin here this evening with me to discuss the petition that's before the council to designate an economic revitalization area of Gilpin's property located on Patterson Street. We filed a petition with the clerk. I believe you all have had copies, perhaps, and we also have the statement of benefits and other information.
I apologize, we did not make copies.
Did you?
Okay. Good.
But I also have, hopefully, I thought it might be helpful if I pass out here at least the aerial, shows the aerial map, and then this is the-
Yeah, good.
The statement of benefits, so you can see exactly, I realize you probably all got this, but I'll pass that out.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you.
For new employees.
So I will just kind of go over the highlights quickly, and we can turn over to Paul, and he can tell you exactly what they're proposing to do. On the map here, you can see what is proposed is a new structure, a new building located behind Gilpin's current manufacturing plant, and it's approximately 10,000 square feet. And they're also going to add new manufacturing equipment in the existing plant. And we have both the statement of benefits here that talks about the addition, the improvements, the anticipated assessed value. We can go through that, as well as the list of equipment and the jobs. But for now, I'll turn it over to Paul, so he can kind of give you a description of exactly what it is they're proposing to do that forms the basis for our request this evening for the economic revitalization information. So Paul, you want to tell me about what's going on?
Yeah. As you know, we manufacture ornamental metal, ornamental steel railing and fence in Decatur for many, many years. And about 10 years ago, we bought a company in Pittsburgh, in Baltimore, Ohio, near Columbus, Ohio, that manufactured ornamental iron railing and fence, and also aluminum railing and fence. And we immediately moved the iron rail and steel fence to our plant here because of the sort of things we already did, but we left the aluminum over there because we didn't have the equipment, nor the space to do that additional activity here. So what we have been doing in the past year is move the bulk of the aluminum railing process to Decatur and squeeze that into our existing facility. We would like now to be able to consolidate the aluminum fence from Baltimore over to Decatur facility. There's only one minor hitch, we're out of room. So what we've decided with our experience moving the aluminum fence over, the railing over, is that we believe that we can, we can make this work with just a relatively simple storage building to store some raw materials and some finished goods. And clear, thereby clear out the existing building, which is what I call a higher quality for the actual manufacturing activity. And then move about $60,000 worth of equipment from Ohio over here and put it in the existing building, or in the space made by putting our, some of our inventory in that new building. We plan to have the two buildings 30 feet apart. The new building will be aligned roughly with the east end of the existing building, and be roughly 80 feet deep back from that 30-foot starting line and 125 wide. They'll be connected by a driveway between them, an empty driveway, and a couple of overhead doors, so we can hit back and forth without putting off our course clocks. And currently planned, the new building will not be heated, it will just be lighted, keeping warehouse standards and just storage. We expect that this will improve our efficiency of manufacturing, and in fact, going to Indiana suppliers for some of the aluminum materials we need, we're finding better prices from them than we were getting from people over in the Ohio area, so there will be additional benefit. But the major benefit is consolidating all the operations here. That will allow us to, you know, keep the business viable and retain all of our current employees, as well as adding roughly four more beyond what we've already added for the aluminum railing. We hope it will be able to grow with our improved cost structure. On the other hand, it's not an easy market, so we'll see what happens. But we're confident we can keep the market up now, but just. So we ask your help, save him the taxes, and your consideration of the plan. We don't, the drawings that we're getting should not be, they're mislabeled drawing, it's a sketch.
Okay. That's fine.
We're working with Drow Arnold, the Arnold Construction, to do the building, and he's in the process of getting a proper drawing prepared, submitted for the appropriate approvals that are required, and see that we comply with the set max and range and all that kind of stuff that I'm not comfortable to talk about. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them, I don't have anything else I need to say.
We appreciate your confidence in the city and wanting to bring additional employees and expanding your current process, so we want to thank you for that. I think this basically has to go through, Tim, the declaratory resolution. Is that what we're after tonight?
Yeah. Yeah, I assume that Mark, there were a couple of blank lines as far as the date by which you're requesting any noncompliance of the statute to be waived.
Yeah, we're prepared to discuss that.
And then also, the length of time for the abatement itself was not specifically identified, so those would need to be filled in to find the resolutions enacted or adopted.
Let me, I guess I'll say this, in that regard, they have not begun any construction yet, so nothing, nothing has started, so as of this evening-
As of today.
As of today, there's nothing started, other than speaking with Arnold Construction about, you know, the building, and that's underway, but there's no dirt has been-
There's no dirt moved, there's no materials on site.
Well, I think there's a process for the plan commission that probably has to-
Yeah.
Things have to happen.
That's the process.
They haven't happened yet, I don't believe.
Your hope is to build it in the fall?
Our hope is to build it and be in it by the end of the year. It's a simple building.
Yeah, it looks like it.
And you're adding four jobs potentially through this?
Yeah.
On your statement of benefits, it will show the estimated value, this I'm going to get on the real estate, SB1 statement of benefits, the estimated value of the improvements for the building is $232,384. At present time, there's 24 employees with gross salaries in the amount of $762,000. The plan is to retain all of those employees and to hire four additional employees for a total of $96,000. Then on the statement of benefits for the additional personal property or manufacturing equipment, then they're planning to add $62,450 in new, in manufacturing equipment, and then also some additional IT equipment. And that complete list of the equipment is attached. I think this is a great example of a local business doing whatever it needs to do in economic times to keep jobs local and to keep their operations healthy. And so, we're asking that if this, if the council pleased, if they would declare the area here to be an economic revitalization area with this declaratory resolution. The area is 7.61 acres. We would ask in a declaratory resolution, then, that that would be for any construction of this project from and after, I would suggest, today's date. Talking it over with Paul as far as the blanks on the time for the deductions, they're looking for a five-year period for the personal property or equipment, and 10 years on the real estate.
That's normal.
We make a motion for Tim to introduce our next product.
I want to make sure we do that right. Tim, is that, we need a motion to introduce the resolution?
If there's no further comments or questions, then yes. At this point, then, we would entertain a motion to introduce the declaratory resolution number 2015 dash 12. And once that is adopted, if in fact it is, then the next step, and then, as I understand what Mark just indicated, the date for waiver of any noncompliance with the statute would be as of August 18, 2015. And the request is for a 10-year abatement on the real estate improvements, and a five-year abatement on the personal property.
Correct.
So at this time, if there's a motion to introduce the resolution, then I'll read it by short title, and council can take action on it.
So moved.
Second. Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried.
Declaratory resolution number 2015 dash 12. City Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, declaratory resolution for the designation of an economic revitalization area upon the application of Gilpin, Inc., FKA Gilpin Ironworks, Inc.
So now we need a motion to- Now we need a motion to adopt resolution 2015 dash 12.
That's correct.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Thank you very much.
I have for you, Tim, an original petition with the original signature.
Okay.
And also SB1's revoked with the original signature.
Okay.
So everybody can hang around, we got like three or four copies to sign.
There's multiple copies here.
Right.
Okay.
The other state, you said, so I'll get the other.
Okay, yeah.
The next process for this then is.
A holding of a public hearing.
Public hearing and then there's a.
Confirming resolution.
Confirming resolution later.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gilpin, for your interest in growing here. Over here.
Over there.
Yeah, we appreciate you being in the community and we want to make it easy to do business here, so thank you.
We appreciate the fact that not only does the government here appreciate business, but the employees here are good employees. They're, you know, hardworking and creative and do a good job, boss. We appreciate that.
Recently, a couple of years maybe, you celebrated a 75th anniversary.
Really?
Yeah, I was able to go out and meet some of the employees.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was nice.
Thank you again.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
So what do you need?
We'll get you a signed copy, Mark.
Yeah. Mark, are you sending that to the Democrats?
Mark, are you, are you gonna have the legal ad?
Do you need me to send the illegal ad or do you have it? I'll do it.
Okay, good. What's that?
Anybody have an extra copy of the SB1?
Yeah, I could give her two.
You can have this.
These are the originals that Phyllis needs to give.
We got that by looking.
They are.
Phyllis sent all the originals.
All right, thank you. Okay, the next item we have is a resolution to proceed with funding for a home.
Thanks, Mark.
That could be bought out because of flooding. I think we talked about this at the last meeting and Mami River Basin Commission has committed $30,000 towards the buyout. And I think the total is, the total cost is $120,000, in some odd dollars.
And what was he asking for?
Uh, what's the question?
He was asking.
He was hoping for 40.
Forty.
He said 20 to 40 and they settled right in the middle with 30. So they're committing 30, the city then can do some in-kind services and that's estimated at $35,000 and that would leave $55,832 that we'd have to commit as city funds. I think it's worth proceeding with this. It sounds like Mami River Basin is very confident that they'll receive the money from the state to purchase these homes, so tonight we have a resolution that basically commits us to that.
Four or five homes?
Five.
Five homes.
Five flood prone properties is how it's looked.
And that's the money that we could, we commit, but we can, we don't pay it till next year?
That's right, that's right. Okay. Mami River Basin has provided us with a resolution that follows what's been drawn. So is there any questions on what we're trying to do here?
Nope.
Well, we need a motion to introduce, what was that, resolution number 12?
This is 13.
This will be resolution 2015 dash 13.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried.
Resolution number 2015 dash 13, short title, all, resolution of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, authorizing a local match commitment for a FEMA hazard mitigation grant program, HMGP grant.
Where would these funds come from, folks? Have we determined that, is it from the?
We talked about, we talked about, we haven't really, we didn't really commit to that.
Okay, we haven't committed that what fund, but we're committing that we do have the money to do it, so. Tim just introduced it, so by short title, somehow we need a motion if so desired to approve it.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Thank you very much. Matter of record, we need to make a matter of record that our lowest local option income tax that was submitted to the Department of Local Government Finance in Indianapolis has been approved by them. So we just really need to make that a matter of record that we did get approval for our lowest additional appropriation. Is that basically how it goes, Phyllis? You gotta see Phyllis, she's got a stack of papers this thick, so it's kind of hard to keep track of where everything is. There it is. So requested increase to $294,075, so the Department of Local Government Finance has approved our request to have that added. Need a motion to make it a matter of record?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried, thank you. Now, it's down to my mayor's report, we had some money that was contributed by different great organizations and businesses here locally to help celebrate the people that volunteered during our flood. And they had a celebration on a Friday night, a lot of food and entertainment and everything like that, but anyhow, there was $353.10 that was left over from those contributions after the money that was spent for food and entertainment and everything else, it's We deposited that money in the volunteer firefighters' fund. I didn't know what else to do, if to be honest, but I'd like to make it a matter of record that we did give that money to the volunteer firefighters' fund, so. It just gives us a tracking of where the money went, basically.
David had been involved in cooking the food and.
Well, and they contributed some of the money, I think they contributed $250, so we're basically giving it out. We need to do something with the money and that's probably the easiest place to go. So we can make that a matter of record.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Anybody look under the bridge there on Monroe Street to see the log jam? In that took bids last week to remove that log jam, so they did get a bid and I was reading a little bit about it. The main thing for me was the completion date. The completion date has to be done before November 15th, so we gotta put up with that no later than that, so hopefully they'll come in here in the next month or two and get it removed, but they did take bids on it and it will be done. It's as bad as I've ever seen it in the past, it's pretty bad. Just one lady, oh, we got some road closures, we got all kinds of things going on with Kikianga here this week. Kikianga, for the events happening out behind Riverside Center, they are requesting that we close Jackson Street from First Street to the Compost Drive, Compost pile drive, from Friday at 8 o'clock to Sunday at 5 o'clock. So that's the first request we have for the Kikianga. We've done this in the past and it's really not, not been a problem. I always work with the street department, the fire department, the police department, so that's their request.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in two seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Second request is for Second Street, Madison Street, Court Street, this is the sidewalk sale that goes on on Saturday from 8 o'clock to 5 o'clock. So this is Second Street from Jackson Street to Jefferson Street and also Madison Street from First to Third and Court Street from Second Street to the alley, First Alley to the west. Sidewalk sale, 8 to 5. I got your times right, Max, you're wrong with that, yeah. We need that request for the sidewalk sale.
Motion to a lot?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. And we have one more and that's for the car show on Friday. So a lot of things happening here this weekend, we got a lot, lot going on. Car show Friday, Second Street from Monroe to Jefferson and then Madison Street from First to Third. And that's on Friday and they'll leave the tent up all night on Madison, so Madison Street's gonna be closed all night. But Second Street will be reopened Friday evening, don't want, requesting from 3 o'clock to 9:30, then on Madison Street from First to Third, all night until, that's on Saturday, so Saturday will be closed until about 5 o'clock.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. We're down to stellar comments. I'm glad I can talk about it today because yesterday it wouldn't have been very nice. But Mr. Baker was there, Cam was there, we had a couple of guests, Greg Kitson and Larry Ish were there, Melissa was there, anybody else there? It was disappointing, I'm sure I can say that, but it's not gonna hold us back from what we want to get done. We're gonna get these projects done, it's just we'll just have to take a different road to get to the end, so we'll proceed, we'll get some information together and apply for grants as they become available. And again, we're gonna get, we're gonna get the projects done, it's just taking a little bit longer to get it done. Anybody want to chime in, please do.
I mean, I'll say, yeah, absolutely disappointing, but we knew it was gonna be very tough, we knew that the other competitors were also second time finalists. It was Marion's fifth time, it was Crawfordsville's fourth time. And, you know, the opportunity was somewhat shrunk just because of the way they did things this year. And having said that though, I think it's important and I guess the message I want our community to understand is that this is not, it's not that the state doesn't like our plan, because that couldn't be further from the truth. The plan, the state loves our plan and they've endorsed our plan. It's just they chose to invest into Crawfordsville, and so I think that's important that, you know, we don't, we don't take that as a, that we've been rejected, because that's really not the case. And of course, the comments that we've heard and the state members that were here and even the comments that we heard afterwards, after we were told that we weren't, you know, selected, they're all very positive. And the progress that we've made over the past two years is really quite phenomenal thanks to all the efforts that are public. And I think we're to be commended for that and, yeah, it's tough, you know, we kind of think about, you know, we gotta dig in and even work harder now, but I, you know, I for one am committed that we're gonna, we're gonna move these things forward and we're not gonna wait for results of stellar next year to determine how we're gonna move ahead. And we will, once we hear back from the state and they come and debrief us, we will have a public meeting and we will let everybody know how we're going to move forward. Because those who, certainly through the Capitol campaign, who've already given and committed to, you know, quality of life initiatives indicator, we're gonna share with you exactly how we're moving forward. And, you know, those projects that we put forward in stellar, those are our phase one projects and there are opportunities to move ahead, maybe not on all of them, but certainly on portions. So I guess that's my message, I want to make sure that our community is not feeling like that we've been rejected or some, in some manner that the state doesn't like our plan because that's really not the case at all. The fact that we were shortlisted twice means that they are endorsing our plan and that's the message that we heard. I would like for them to come and publicly tell that to the rest of the community.
Yes.
And they might tell us.
And we will, we will work on that because I think in some aspects, they, we were owed that much, so that's kind of my two cents on that.
Yeah, and I would, I would add this, yesterday Bill Canna, who's head of Ocre now, talked about, he was involved in Wabash's efforts to become a stellar community last year, and he talked that when they first started, they were seeking the pot of gold at the end of the rainbow that was being offered by stellar. But what he said in the course of going through the process, he said they realized that the rainbow itself was the prize. It's the process of involving your community and getting your community to say what it views as its future and getting the community to embrace and become invested in seeing that happen. And, and I think we've been through that process now for two years. We have the rainbow in our hands. It gives us that map of where we're going in the future. So I say, let's do it. Let's roll up our sleeves, let's get it done. If we can't accelerate the process through stellar, doesn't mean that we can't continue to move forward and get our city to the place that we want, and my preference is the sooner the better. So let's do it. Let's, when people, when businesses are approached by the campaign committee and asking for yourself, or for your support financially, look at it as strictly an investment in yourself, in your city's future, in your children's and your grandchildren's future, because that's what we're talking about. The process of what we've gone through has made it very clear that one of our greatest resources that we don't make use of is our young people. We want to keep them in our community. We want them to come back here and be the future leaders of our city. And if we don't make the city of Decatur a desirable place for them to live or to start up a business, then we're gonna lose them. And we're not alone, trust me, every community in the state of Indiana and probably a good part in the nation are faced with the same dilemma, the same challenge. So what we are doing through stellar is trying to put us in a position to retain that valuable resource. That's what we want. And, and I look at all of the successful people that I've known in my lifetime and look and read about all the success stories of businesses, how often do they run into hardships, to obstacles? They didn't give up, they persevered, they saw it through to the point that they became a success. And that's what we're going to do as a city of Decatur.
Greg, you got a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Baker, for starting my comments. Just a little bit of history, two and a half years ago, Mayor Schultz asked a group of us to sit down as his long-range planning advisory committee. That group evolved into what became Greater Decatur and is still Greater Decatur. Greater Decatur determined if a stellar community program looks available within the state of Indiana, and we were gonna pursue the stellar community program to learn how to talk to the state. We got a little bit full of ourselves and decided that we knew what was going on and that we were going to be the stellar designate last year. And when we worked, awarded stellar, we got our feelings hurt, quite honestly, we got our feelings hurt. We stepped back and stopped, but then when we resumed, we sat down, we took the information from the debrief from the state, we took what they told us that we needed to learn, and all of a sudden, it was not when we get stellar, it's what we're going to do for Decatur. That is what has been happening. Now, for those of you who want to get updated on this very quickly, Decatur Main Street sent out a newsletter today that was an amazing informational piece. If you are not receiving that, via email, and we suggest you talk to Max Miller or Melissa about getting on their email distribution list, it was about 300 pages long, right? 20 pages long, but it listed those projects that we're talking about, it listed the priorities, it listed how stellar impacted and how stellar did not impact those projects. So that gives you a real good overview of what's going on. Decatur is ready to move forward, council has made a commitment. We've done all of the studies that are necessary to apply for and to be granted, many of the programs that the state and federal government has available. We've done our homework. Now we're ready to start reaping those rewards, and that's what we're going to do. If stellar is part of next year, that's fine, but we know stellar's gonna change, the program's going to evolve, they've got new personnel, the program will change. We may choose not to devote resources to the stellar application process, but use those resources internally to go directly to those organizations that stellar was going to be the avenue for. So the one thing that I would like everybody to take away is we have made incredible strides. we're much more organized and we're ready to go and will continue the momentum that we started. Thank you.
And I, just to, I mean, I think it's fair to say that last year at this time, we were not ready to go on our own. We still, we still needed stellar, I mean, the difference in the last year and the successes that we've actually had, we've moved projects forward in the last year, so we're just going to continue to do that, so.
Larry, anything you want to add?
Well, I'm sort of bashful.
When did that happen?
Tim took a lot of my comments, Greg took a lot of them, Cam, you took a lot of them. It's very emotional, you know, what we're going through. As of Friday, we've gone over 600,000 that we have in the Capitol Campaign Fund, and if anybody's brought your check over to us tonight, I'm available to accept more donations, and we are going to quit on the donation part of it. I have two appointments to go out and talk to tomorrow, and I hope that tomorrow I'll have 50,000 more from those two appointments. The people have seen what we've put together, and they know we're serious about what we want to do. I would just like to see a couple of the projects happen before I go, you know.
Where are you going? Going out of town or what?
We always say we have things that we wanted to and put on our bucket list, you know, this is one of my bucket lists, to get some of these projects fully moving, and we've got a great committee, we've got a great town, we've got great leadership, we've got a commitment from the leadership, what more could we ask?
Melissa, I don't know how you can do this, but can you follow up with any comments? Melissa, Melissa's done a lot of work on this, where the whole Greater Decatur group has been a godsend for us as a community, it's, it's really been a pleasure watching it develop and see where we're at today compared to two and a half years ago. The comments, this was not rehearsed, so it's really refreshing to hear the impact that had on certain individuals here, so, again, thank Greater Decatur, we want to move forward, thank you. Department head reports, Mr. Hitchcock?
Nothing.
Greg?
Nothing, David.
Nate?
Roger?
John, maybe the other thing I want to bring up is, remember the last meeting with the head, Rod Regenberger from MRBC up here, and they did have their board meeting, and they did commit $30,000 towards-
Towards the buyouts, yes, yes. We want, and we personally want to thank them publicly of their confidence in our community, yes.
Yeah, so Rod is putting that grant application together, that's, that time's on the 28.
Yeah, good, good deal, thank you. Jeremy?
Yeah.
Daniel?
Yeah.
Mr. Carbaugh? Oh, there's Ann hiding back, I'm sorry, Ann. Bill? I think I got everybody here. Melissa? Not going to have a department air? All right, all right, good. Comments from city council members, anything you want to bring up?
Speaking of moving ahead, progress, First Street Properties, have we talked to the property owners, I know we've kind of been busy doing other things, but-
I, I don't think we've really got anything to report, I think we've had some contact with them, I, I keep looking over Larry, Larry-
Yeah, redevelopment.
-is leading the charge on that, so we, we don't have anything really to report this kind of-
I was just trying to get some appraisals done on the property.
Yeah, over 25,000 these appraisals.
Okay.
Any other comments? We'll go to the public, anybody in the public, we have some guests here tonight, I see, anybody want to bring something up? Appreciate everybody coming, wasn't the most exciting council meeting we've ever had, but I appreciate your patience in coming to hear it all. Mr. Baker?
No.
Good. Phillips?
Thank you.
Oh, you claim, claim, claim one.
I'll move claims, be page posted.
Second.
Motion second to pay the claim, submitted, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion, second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.